Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started with the work session. It's so nice to see so many people here this evening. Welcome, glad to have you. So we'll call the meeting to order. And the first item on our agenda is a proclamation for pancreatic cancer awareness day. And Councilman Harper is actually gonna step down and read that for us. Do we have somebody here to accept the proclamation? Yes, please step forward. She's our youngest visitor today, wonderful, welcome, welcome.
This is actually, I'll just preface this by saying kind of a nice honor. Mary Ellen used to be my neighbor. And so all condolences are really due to her anyway. Proclamation, whereas pancreatic cancer has become one of our time's most devastating diseases. And whereas pancreatic cancer has suppressed surpassed breast cancer to become the third leading cause of cancer deaths in the United States. And is projected to become the second leading cause by the year 2025. And whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally later in stages. And only 10% of pancreatic cancer patients are diagnosed when the disease is confined to their pancreas. And 91% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years of diagnosis. And whereas it is projected that in 2021, approximately 580 Iowans will have been diagnosed. And 470 deaths will occur. And whereas the long term health and well being of the residents of Marion are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer. And ongoing research into the early detection, causes and effective comprehensive treatments. Now therefore, I grant Harper on behalf of Mayor Nicholas Abu Asalee. Do hereby designate November 18th, 2021 as pancreatic cancer awareness day in the city of Marion. And I'd like to present this to Mary Ellen Oglesby. And Mary Ellen, if you'd like to say a couple of words, that'd be great.
Well, thank you very much, we appreciate the proclamation. And if you could help spread awareness with us by wearing purple on Thursday, we would really appreciate that. Our foundation is the Michael W. Oglesby Foundation, my older brother.
I'm sorry, Mike passed away six years ago and we have this foundation for him. So thanks, Grant.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is a request for a tax increment financing request.
Evening Mayor, council members, Nick Glue, President of Marion Economic Development. Just wanted to give a brief introduction to the next, actually several, several items on the agenda. We're excited to be here. First, we're gonna start with a presentation from Ted Cooper at Actara Group. And what I want to say about not just these presentations, this presentation, but the next one as well. That these are projects that very much align with some of the trends that are happening in industry today. So we know that workforce is a challenge, right? So companies are investing in ways to be more efficient, to be more automated, to create better paying jobs for the people we do have. And so this first project is an example of that. And I'll let Ted talk a little bit about his project and their planned investment in our community. And then we'll answer any questions you might have before going on the next project, so.
Thank you, Nick. Good to see some faces from old times, a few a little older than I thought, but. As Nick said, we're looking at adding to our facilities on 35th Street in Marion. We've been in business, Marion business now since 1958, third generation family business. We've run into issues with recruiting people like anyone else. So what, but our business has grown significantly in the steel tank manufacturing. What you see up there is I'm looking at putting in a new fabrication facility and a new painting and sandblasting facility. The new fabrication area will be completely automated. So I won't need to have as many employees, which is a not a great thing for it. You know, I know you want to add employees, but we're gonna have to add probably five to eight employees that are all much more educated than just your standard welder that comes off the street today. The systems are all completely computerized, internet capable, all that. And so we want to, we want to add that to our facility. It's about the same size I have today in my larger welding shop. Yeah, at this point, we're looking to start in, in January, kick off that part of the, of the project. The second project would be a, the smaller building that we would add on to our current facilities. Add our paint, add larger paint capabilities and bring our sandblasting inside. What that does for me is it allows me much larger, to build much larger tanks that we're turning away today, which is a, you know, a huge benefit to the community. Because again, I'm gonna have to add a couple of jobs in that area. But also just the, the tax base will grow. We're looking at about a three and a half to four million dollar addition to our whole property once it's all completed. And that'd be done in two phases. Phase one would be the, the welding and phase two would be the painting. Happy to answer any questions you have.
I'm gonna have to let the mayor pro tem lead the discussion on this, thanks.
Okay, questions, Steve?
Just to comment, so I spent a summer working at B and H Tank right out of high school. So I, at least I understand what the operation was back, was like back then. And if you're gonna be automating that facility, I think obviously like a lot of companies are doing today. You need to find a way to use automation and to invest smartly. So glad to see you're continuing to invest in our city.
Thank you, and since your day, we've, we've got some robotic welding and we've got laser tables in there, but still I need to do even more, so.
It was all hand welding back then.
I remember those days, Steve.
Since that day and back then, I wonder what all that means, right, Steve? Other questions or comments? Go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, Ted, what, again, what's your project timeframe for both of these?
So we'd like to kick off in January for the first phase. And we're assuming kicking off kind of in the third quarter for the second, second phase.
In which constitutes the second phase?
So the two buildings, so if you see the picture, so one is the larger building, which is the, the fabrication or welding. And the other would be the paint area, redoing the paint area.
So production would then be increased and new, new production with your technologies would be then starting when?
We'd expect the actual production would be up by the end of the second quarter. Okay, would still be operating. And so what the plan would be is just take the current building for the second phase and add on to that, which would allow us to stay in business.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Renee or Will, anything from you two?
No, I, no, I just agree with Steve's comment about the need to keep overhauling to keep up with things. So I think it's a great idea and glad they're continuing to expand in Marion.
Thanks Renee, just as a, I don't think I said that's the beginning of the meeting, beginning of the meeting, but Renee and Will are with us today, they're just in Zoom land, so they're here. Okay, anything else before we move on to the next item? Okay, thanks Ted.
All right, thank you.
Just one other thing to add, you'll note in the packets, you may have been hearing over the past couple of months, the legislator approved, the legislature approved some dollars for what they call Industry 4.0 grants, supporting companies that are making investments similar to this. Our conversation with city staff as part of our economic development committee. We really, we asked that as part of this process that they go through that evaluation. And so Ted's made those connections. There's an assessment process that goes through and hopefully we can perhaps leverage some of these state grant dollars to support some of this technology integration. Again, the support of the city will have to do more with the real estate. And the grant would hopefully help support the acquisition of some of this automation equipment, so.
Hey, next item.
Next project, oh, let me just also say Thursday, then the action item that will be on the agenda is requesting council to direct staff to develop a memorandum of understanding, just a reminder of the process that we follow on that. So the next item, an individual that I'll introduce to you is Rusty Peck with a company called Polymer Engineering. Rusty's not a new face to the community, I'm sure he'll tell you a little bit more about that. This is an investment that has a little bit to do with supply chain. So as companies are working with manufacturers of different components that he'll show you and tell you about. Obviously, getting those components that are critical to what companies like Polymer do have been tricky. And so we have been finding more and more companies that are starting to make those investments to have a better control of their own supply chain. Sometimes that means doing manufacturing on their own. So with that, I'll introduce Rob Rusty to tell you a little bit more about his company and their proposed project.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Council. Like Nick said, I came to Marion in 1981, Diger Peck Company, maybe some of you remember it. I employed 25 people here in town. In 2000, I funded Neesop and sold the company to my employees. It's now a $30 million company. And they unfortunately moved to Cedar Rapids, but they occupy the old Cedar Rapids Convention Center. 80,000 square feet under one roof. I had a 15 year no compete agreement with them. I waited about 14 and a half years and I founded Polymer Engineering Corporation, here I am again, so. Anyhow, we've grown to a few million in sales very quickly, we've been in business for seven years. I'm not only importing, but buying product from all over the country. One of the products that I want to start out with is blow molding. I purchased product from a company called Custom Pack in Clinton. And just for fun, I Googled them and, and ran some reports on them. And I thought, you know, they're a pretty big company, they probably employ two or 300 people. I was surprised that they employ over 800 people and have five facilities, blow molding business. Now, I, I could probably stand here and talk for hours and I've brought parts for show and tell, but the fact of the matter is I own all kinds of tooling for all kinds of different parts already. And there's no reason for me not to manufacture these parts right here in Marion. Rather than farming them out to other communities, I buy from as far away as Salt Lake City, California, South Dakota, Florida, and these parts could all be made right here. And I already own the tooling, so all I've got to do is get the machinery going and start producing this product. And I've been doing this for 40 years, so I kind of know what I'm doing. And I did bring some numbers, I don't know if you're interested in looking at that from some of the different manufacturers that I purchased from. And how many people they employ and what the revenues are. And I'd be glad to, I only printed one copy, but I'd be glad to leave that with you. I'd be glad to show you some parts, if you'd like to see what, what it is that I do, I've got bags of parts in my briefcase. But I'll leave that up to you if you've got time or if you are interested in looking at that.
Okay, you have questions? Anyone? Well, just for purposes of the, of the public, would you just explain what you're requesting from the city?
What am I requesting? Well, I'd like to have a tax abatement to get this project going and now I will tell you this too, I filled out a application with the city and I set out to employ three new people. The first year, I think it was six, the second year, this week I've hired two new people, one full time, one part time. So we're up to nine full time people and one part time person at this, at this point in the game. So, and we've been in Marion for less than a year and a half, so.
Okay. Good to have you back in Marion.
I'm sorry.
Good to have you.
Well, you know what, it's home, I've lived all over the country and I always ended up, my parents, grandparents were born here and I always end up back in Marion, I don't know what it is, but there's a draw, there's no doubt about it.
Anyone have questions?
So I don't, I don't want you to sort of have to go through your whole bag, but maybe we can see one, one item you want to show us today.
Okay, well.
You brought a whole bag, so you might as well give us one.
This is a blow molded part right on top, so I'll show you that one. Currently I buy this from Custom Pack down in Clinton. I produce 40,000 of these a year. And what it is, is a float for cattle watering equipment. Basically, it works like a toilet, cattle come up, they drink the water, the float goes down, starts the valve rolling.
Would you mind speaking in a microphone, no sir, we're recording this meeting, so we need to have.
You can tell I do a lot of public.
Record, okay, thank you.
You know, I also make this part here, I make a valve that goes with this, I make the connectors, I make a lot of different things. We're also very large into hydraulic seals and packing, which doesn't mean a lot to you guys. But Iowa is the hydraulic Mecca of the world. There is more hydraulic cylinders built in Iowa than any other state in the union.
Thank you.
All right, anything else?
Yep, just go ahead. Yeah, thank you. So what are your top target industries for your products being, being used in?
Well, my largest customer is Kinsey Manufacturing in Williamsburg currently. When I had Diger Peck, deer was my biggest, deer case, caterpillar. Anybody that manufactures anything, I have a meeting with Vector Corporation tomorrow. Haven't really worked on Marion a lot at this point. But you know, what happened is I, I, after I sold Diger Peck, I moved to Florida. And when my no compete expired, I, I started my business out of the bedroom of my house. And because of all my ties to Iowa, it brought me back. But anybody that manufactures anything uses my product, people like Marion Mixers. Drawing a blank on the name of the company out in the new industrial park, but anything made of rubber or plastic is basically what I do.
So it could be local, regional, or perhaps national or international customers ultimately.
I'm sorry, the acoustics are killing me.
So you could end up having anywhere from local to international customers seeking your products.
Absolutely, and we do ship overseas as well.
Yeah, okay, good, thanks, that's helpful.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you guys are interested in any of the numbers, I'm more than glad to leave those with you.
So again, as you're looking at the actual request, each of these, if you look in the packets, at the amount that we're projecting in the TIF rebate section. It's following our standard policy of offering a five year, 100% rebate equivalent. So the MOU will come back and specifically define the structure of that, but that's always the target that per policy we seek to support.
Thank you. Number three?
The third one, and look at Medco for once, we're ahead of schedule instead of taking more time than we've asked for. No pressure to my team. So this is the time of year that we want to come back and basically tell you a little bit about what we're hearing from our business community in 2021. So it's often that you hear from us, projects like this, things that you see being built. But a lot of the work that we do is really listening to our existing industry partners on what's going on in the marketplace that then informs the work that we do in, in the following year. And so Brady Quinn is gonna kick things off here today. He's our business retention and expansion person, basically he's our existing industry person. And so he's going to present to you kind of the results of his work here in 2021. And then Emily Russ, who does a lot of our workforce programming specifically with community promise. Is gonna share with you a few slides on some of what we're seeing in that space this year as well. So with that, I'll get out of the way and have Brady finger one.
Welcome.
Mayor, Council, appreciate the time tonight, this afternoon. Next slide, please. So our, the Business Retention and Expansion Program. These are kind of the key focus areas of what we pulled out of, of the survey that we were able to accomplish over the last year. Two weeks ago today was my one year anniversary with Medco. So it's been a great team to join and appreciate Nick and Emily's support. So now quickly kind of into the impact of what we were able to accomplish. So from October 2021, so just wrapping up the end of this last month and beginning in January of 2021. We had about 70 visits, some virtual, some in person. And we were able to interview over 100 individuals in these meetings. And then average employment base of 100 with a median employment base of 30. And the total number of local employees was about 6,000. And when we say local, what we tried to do with this was get more of a Marion perspective on the survey. So next slide, please. So community business climate, just real, real brief here. The two, the two questions, the first one based on technology infrastructure here in our community. 98% said yes, that it was adequate. Obviously with, with COVID and everything going on, the infrastructure became even more important than it ever has been. The second question here, is there any reason the community may not be considered for future expansion? 100% of our respondents said no, obviously the, the local community perception is positive and, and that's always a good place to start, right? So next slide, please. I'll get into what, what we'll call the product section now, kind of focusing on new capabilities or products and services that anyone locally here has introduced. 23% say in the last three years, yes, that they have. The majority of these have been related to AI and robot technology capabilities. Specifically, we have, we have two local manufacturers with, with, one with this Flexilla products. And then one that's also been able to expand into a repair type of service as well. And then also security system products and cybersecurity services are also a couple of other opportunities that have continued to grow locally. Are any new products or services anticipated in the next two years? We had a little, obviously only a few committed to a yes here, I think this is more so related to the, the current environment coming out of the pandemic. Obviously, everyone's sticking to what they know, taking care of their own type of thought process there. But then looking at the next question, do you anticipate technology changes to your company's product production or operation? About a 50% of yes, which makes sense based on, you know, obviously the, a couple of the presentations that we just saw. These automation upgrade investments, robots replacing people that run machines. Adoption of technology to make work more efficient. And then adoption of technology for virtual working, not with, not only with peers, but also with clients. So that's, that's been a, a big response in that product section here. Next slide, please. Supply chain, we've all heard about it, it's in the news every day, right? So the, the 82% does represent our entire, you know, 70 respondents. But to be honest, the only ones that did not say they are having issues are service providers, like our lending institutions. Our, our real estate brokers, insurance agents and other financial services. So about anyone that, that's impacted, impacted by that, you know, about 100% is, is kind of what we're seeing. So that, and it's, it's also related to lead times, you know, we usually see one to, one to three week is now 10 to 12 weeks. And it's also becomes very random, this demand, this supply and demand issue. You have people stocking up on inventory, which then creates, you know, stresses items that people weren't expecting to be out of. Like little fuses, right, for, for little miscellaneous projects. Next slide, please. Management, this is one that we've, we were looking at into what I think will help us guide work in, into 2022. The question was around, is there a succession plan in place for your business? 43% answered no. And honestly, out of the 57% that did answer yes, I would say that it's more of a natural succession plan of my son is, is in the business, I have family in the business. But I think our role as, as, you know, being Marion's local economic development is to really provide that opportunity to have those tough conversations, but then also provide those resources to, to be able to act on that plan. Let's be honest, a true paper plan in place is, is what's gonna help keep our local businesses local. Next slide, please. This is kind of the market facility section here. And when, when we say market, kind of, kind of looking at, hey, did you plan to expand your facility in the next three years? And this was specific, the question, the way this was worded was before COVID, did you plan? And we had 23% say that yes, they did plan. And of that, 23%, 77% said that they were still planning on that expansion, either it was underway. The plans were happening, and once again, this was from that January to October timeframe. So taking into account, you know, maybe some of these have, have completed or some are underway. And then the last question related to kind of this real estate facility question, do you anticipate real estate requirements changing as a result, result of COVID, excuse me? 89% said no, and the majority, and I would actually, that final 11% that did not, that were holding out there, it was more so related to non-production, so sales and operations type of staff. So that kind of is, is the wrap up on the market facility there, so that's, next slide, please, on to workforce. So keep harping on this timeframe survey, time period, all the way from January to October. So we're kind of able to follow that perspective change of workforce as it became more normalized, right, as, as we'll call it. So 89% said yes, they were having, excuse me, I skipped over this, on my next question. So let me skip, is, is your current staffing level the same as pre-COVID? So we had 89% say yes. So that means that their staffing level was either the same or higher than it was before the pandemic. So this kind of led me in then to this next question as far as having recruitment problems, 71% yes. And the majority of those, of those problems are related to IT, HR, land surveyors, drivers, entry level labor, tellers, civil engineers, CPA, so kind of just all across the board. And then what strategies are you using to recruit workers? The majority of our respondents have kind of, are all relating to like a third party being able to help them out. Beyond, you know, more creative strategies, so we also see that as an opportunity in 2022 as, as ways that we can continue to to provide resources and opportunities for our local employers to, to reach that talent. Then the last, last slide here that I have related to, to at least specific to the survey in my, in my graphs here is, is related to mental health. So 66% said that, that their company does offer some type of mental health advisory service. The overwhelming majority of that, who did answer yes, it was that same old, you know, five year, same old rollover of an EAP. So not discounting those surface services at all, but I, I think from our viewpoint, looking ahead again to 2022. We're, we're wondering where we can do more to kind of bridge this gap and to provide the additional community resources to our business community. Last slide for me here, next. So kind of to wrap up was just more so looking at a common theme. What we tried to ask was, hey, what was your top three business impacts coming out of COVID? So of our, of our 70 interviews, we had over 150 total responses related to, hey, name your top three. And over 75% of those impacts were considered negative impacts. And you can see the big ones here, supply chain, workforce, and this inflation wage pressure, price, price pressure type of situation. I also wanted to share some of those positive things though that we saw, advancing technology. Not just adoption for clients, but also adoption for employees. There's also been a lot of opportunity for business acquisitions, acquisitions and the advancement of automation technology to work with less people. The last, the last thing I'll mention is just over these last 18 months through duration of pandemic, the thing that, the common occurrence that I kept feeling and hearing from, from our business community is our local economy and the people here who live here are resilient. And that taking care of your own and, and taking care of local matters and patience and relationships matter. So just funny how all these little things and, and it always comes down back to that relationship factor. So I'm happy to continue to, to hopefully grow this relationship with, with you guys here in the council, the city of Marion, our business community. So again, appreciate the opportunity and, and welcome questions, I'll kind of jump out of the way like Emily, but I don't, maybe if there's initial questions or thoughts from, from council or.
Any questions? Yes, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, first of all, I think what you're doing, what Medco is doing is extremely important. Out there contacting, making contacts with our existing business. Out there contacting, making contacts with our existing businesses. Since I think if I remember my percentages correct, about 80 or 90% of new job growth comes from existing businesses, not from new businesses coming into the city. Okay. So what you're doing is, is spot on and needed very, very importantly. But my question would be, with all of these contacts that you had, is there anything that you gleaned out of that? That would be thoughts, ideas or recommendations for the city to do and how the city can continue to help and support all these existing businesses? Anything different that you came up with? Maybe you can't think of it today, but if there's something else, I think that's always been another important aspect that we need to be thinking about as well.
I, I think it's just the continued awareness of who, who Medco is in general, and then also just the, the continued resources we have in our community. So I just know that, you know, though, yes, this whole community unity situation is, is incredible and what we have here, but also knowing that our neighbor next door in Cedar Rapids has all these resources to be able to, to continue to apply here and not reinvent the wheel. So I think that's what we're excited about for 2022 specifically. As, as our team has grown, to be able to continue to, to grow our resources here in those connections. But anything off the top of my head related to that, that seems like a loaded question, Steve. So anyway, I, I would love to, you know, discuss further some, some of your ideas and also just, you know, keep our ears to the ground. I think that's, that's the key for us is continuing to be at, at the backend call, right? I mean, that's, that's our, that's our role and that's our goal. So.
Thanks. Other questions? Thank you.
One thing that Brady didn't mention that sometimes we do these surveys so often that we forget some of the things that we're not talking about. But we do ask in every interview, utility by utility. Are you using more or less electricity? Are you satisfied with water service? Are you satisfied with street service? We ask all that stuff. The good thing is there was nothing important or huge takeaway to come back to you and say, hmm, here's, here's what we're hearing. Sometimes we do send some one-off comments, you know, we send some notes to the fire chief or we send some notes to, to Tom about, you know, things that we want them to be aware of. But the good thing is, is through all of that, there's no huge red flags, you know, that 100% of companies saying they would continue to invest here, that, that's a spectacular number. So anyway, just a little more context.
Good afternoon. You can next slide. Thank you. Hello, I'm Emily Russ and I am the workforce communication specialist on the team at Medco. And I am going to share just a little bit with you about community promise and some of our dashboard metrics for this last year. Community promise, of course, is our initiative to better connect students, parents, businesses to the bigger world around them and align with what they're interested in and show them how that's available in our community. So each year, as I mentioned, we track a couple of metrics and a few of the ones that I want to show this afternoon are between both Lynnmar and Marion School Districts. According to the Iowa post-secondary readiness data, each year they post within the first year following a student's graduation, their intentions and then how they track versus two-year and four-year training. You'll, you'll just see from 2017 through this past school year, their plans. We adapted the goal of future ready Iowa has a goal of 70% of working Iowans in the workforce, having education or training beyond high school by 2025. And you can see that both of our districts are tracking right at 70% or above. Because this does not include certain metrics as in the trades or going some of those other things that this is just two and four-year training. So I think we're, we're doing pretty good there. Can I advance the slide? And this next metrics, of course, is student participation and job shadows and internships. I think this tells an interesting story of the pandemic and some of those experiences not being allowed to happen there in the beginning of the 2020, 21 school year. And we hope that, and we know that Kirkwood has been very creative in how that they, they were able to give students some of these experiences virtually. Okay, next slide. Something else that we are proud of this summer in August, we sold our first community build home and we are currently working on the second home. There are a couple of photos there, but you can follow along. We're always trying to share that on our social media platforms. Okay, next slide. And I, I'll show a video here shortly, but a strategic goal of ours in this past year was to spread awareness of what we have that are called pursuit grants. We created this short video and I'll pull it up here to better show students how they are eligible for this specific grant. It's right here in the, yep. So that was just a video that we had created in this past year and we're trying to share it all over the place to find the right student that is interested and has a relationship with a business in Marion. Of course, we want to keep our talent local and incentivizing them to stay here. This last slide is just a brief overview with venture academics. This is a high school based in the classroom at Lynnmar that they launched this fall in order to create opportunities for students to learn hands-on. We had a hand in helping them connect with different businesses and community members and up, up above are a few photos of different things that they have done this fall. We've been able to connect them with a number of different businesses and it's exciting to see some of these hap, these things happen that we've been talking about for some time. That's all I have. Does anyone have any question?
Questions for Emily? Thank you to all three of you. I appreciate you coming in to give us this report. Obviously, Medco has lots of investors and Marion is one of the investors in Medco and probably the largest investor. But we really pride ourselves on the collaboration and the cooperation that happens between the city and Medco. The city of Medco has become a very important part of everything that the city does and the, and the success of the city. I just think back to the coaches, the COVID period, how active Medco was along with the Chamber of Commerce in helping to provide those resources to businesses that power our economy here to, to help them navigate through that difficult period of time. That's just one aspect. The, the, these programs on building the talent pool for the, for the businesses, which is, has become a very important issue for all businesses. The, creating that infrastructure and the ecosystem for businesses to feel like they have support here and they can thrive here is, is so important. So thank you for all you do and for your partnership with the city. Okay, we'll move on with the consent agenda. Are there any items? A1 through A7, none of those items are marked for discussion, but are there any questions on those items? Okay. Okay, A8. Hello?
Hello, thank you, Your Honor. I'll actually cover A8 and A9 together because they're very related. And before I get started, I just wanted to recognize the finance team and all the hard work that does go into the annual reports. And especially giving some acknowledgement to Brian McKinsey as he did help me compile these ones that we're presenting on tonight. With that, just a quick refresher on what we're going to cover tonight. On the following slide is the agenda. We're going to cover exactly what is tax increment finance? And I will provide an actual city of Marion example. We're going to cover the TIF obligation instruments. Basically the instruments for which we can utilize TIF. And then we'll cover the reporting requirements, two of which are on the agenda to be approved. So Gatsby 77, the annual urban renewal report and the TIF indebtedness certification. So a refresher, what is tax increment finance? I always love these graphic images of, if you can just imagine land, it's the simplest example. Land with nothing on it. And then it has a value, it's a very small value for land. And then we put a building on it and then the building has value. The increment is that value that's created. And so there is a graphic example for you. That's the TIF. The Marion example I want to provide is legacy manufacturing. Legacy is a shining example of how the city of Marion has utilized TIF. We have agreement with legacy manufacturing. It's a five-year agreement with a maximum of 740,000. Before Legacy's expansion, their base value was $9.4 million. After the expansion on January 1st, 2021, their assessed value was $21.23 million. That is an increment value of 11.8 million. So what does this mean for the city of Marion? Believe it or not, one thing that people don't seem to understand is tax increment finance does not mean a full abatement of TIF of their tax. There are certain levies, for instance, the property plant and equipment levy for the school districts. The one, big one for the city of Marion is the debt service levy. So I did kind of provide, it's kind of small on the screen, on the top right there, the debt service levy that was paid by legacy manufacturing, fiscal year 1920 was just under 20,000. For 2021, it jumped over 40,000. So it doubled with this TIF agreement. And then in the bottom left there, you can see their taxes paid. Was 300,000. I did put the rebate amount in yellow. So they pay their full tax bill and then the city of Marion rebates a portion. So that yellow is the rebated portion and you can see even with the agreement that the city has, the tax paid, net tax paid is still increasing over the, over the life of the TIF agreement. And then obviously with that big growth, we are expecting this agreement to fall off in three years instead of five. Which is why I wanted to provide it as an example. TIF obligation instruments, the city can't just use TIF because we want to use TIF. There are a lot of procedures that have to occur in order for us to utilize TIF. The three big ones, these are the three instruments that allow us to use TIF. A rebate agreement, which is essentially a development agreement that we have with a developer. An internal loan where the city borrows money from one fund to another fund or a bond note or some type of legal debt instrument. The city then has to report on all of these things. And Gatsby 77 is the financial note disclosure report. We are required to send a letter to each taxing jurisdiction, how much of their tax dollars were diverted to the city of Marion for TIF. The urban renewal report, which reports on all TIF obligations, payments and projects, which is due December 1st and is one of the items on the agenda tonight. And the TIF indebtedness certification, which certifies TIF debts and specifies TIF requests for the next budget year, also due December 1st and on the agenda tonight. The, and funny thing about this is the urban renewal report is your past looking report. So it's going to look at your fiscal year 2021. Your TIF indebtedness certification is forward looking, so it's going to look at 22, 23. I am not reporting on current fiscal year, which is 21, 22. And then the other note to make, the SEC does require continuing disclosures every year. We do provide an annual report required that does list out a number of our TIF obligations. In addition to when city council does pass a larger TIF agreement that is considered material, that has to also be reported within, I believe it's 10 days of approval. So there's a lot of reporting. Gatsby 77, so this is the diverted TIF revenue, actual expenditure. And yes, even the city of Marion does make a note disclosure. So total amount of diverted TIF revenue, which is actually based on actual expenditure. It's kind of confusing that way, but actual expenditure for this past year, 2021, total was 4.17 million. Of that, the city of Marion's portion was 1.56 million. And then Lynn Mars, 903,000, Lynn County, 784, you can read the slide down going there. The thing, one thing that I like to look at or the way I like to present it is for every dollar that we use in TIF, about 37 cents right now, based on this last year, was city of Marion. And the other thing to say, some people might say, hey, that's, that's revenue lost, but let's remember that if we didn't enter these TIF agreements, the but for the increment wouldn't exist if we didn't. So it's actually dollars that they will gain in future years and that's the way I prefer to view it. So moving on, the annual urban renewal report, here is a high level summary of each area. 71% actually comes from the Collins Road Urban Renewal District, Urban Renewal Area. 15% from Central Corridor, 9% from West Tower Terrace. Collins Road and Central Corridor by far make up the majority. Actual expenditures for fiscal year 2021, and I've continued to keep the prior, prior years on there, just so you can kind of see the trends. Rebate agreements, there were 30 rebate agreements paid out this past year in a total of 1.2 million. Internal loans were paid back in the amount of 442,000. Bonds, notes, 2.5 million and LMI projects, we did pay out 120,000, 120,000 was for the community build and 20,000 was the civil rights grant on the low to moderate. High level, some of the larger rebates greater than 35,000. Here are the companies that were paid, legacy manufacturing, Squaw Creek Crossing, which is the DuPaco Community Credit Union and the Quickstar Buildings, Marion Iron, Lincoln View Square, which is your Lynn area credit union, CVS Pharmacy, the strip mall, and there's a fourth building there, my mind is blanking. ESCO Group out on Tower Terrace Road, the Arbor at Lindale Trail, Blair's Ferry Senior Apartments, Hup Electric, Phillips Diamond Shop, APC Emmett Integrity and Freund Vector. The TIF indebtedness certification, so what we are certifying for the next fiscal year. Rebate agreements, again, there are 30 this time in the amount of 1.7 million. Internal loans is actually decreasing as we paid some off this last fiscal year in the amount of 216,000 and bonds notes in the amount of 2.54 million. And again, high level, just highlighting some of those companies that we are requesting dollars for. Genesis Equities, Legacy Manufacturing, Squaw Creek Crossing, Medco Holding, Timberline GLD Properties, Lincoln View Square, TWG, Marion Iron, Arbor at Lindale Trail, Blair's Ferry Senior Apartments and APC Emmett. And then again, just presenting TIF certification by area, you see 77%. Collins Road, Central Corridor, 16%, West Tower Terrace, 7%, so that trend hasn't changed. And then forecasting the future. This is kind of what the graph looks like. We continue to hover around that 4.5 million dollars in total. With the bulk being Collins Road hovering around 3, 3.2 million. Central Corridor hovering around 725,000, expected to go up to a million in the next few years. And then just some of the debts that are actually expiring. ESCO Group out on Tower Terrace Road, Hup Electric Motors, Freund Vector, an internal loan. An internal loan with Medco for AIS Restoration. Legacy Manufacturing, Memorial Hall, internal loan for the Mojo Properties Elevator. Lincoln View Square and Heartland Animal Hospital. And then in the forecast, some debts that will actually be starting. Genesis Equities for the Sixth Avenue Project, GLD Properties, Squaw Creek Crossing. The twenty twenty AGO bond will start paying back. Internal loan for Mojo Properties. Integrity, Culver Enterprises, GLD Properties, Victory Sports Center, TWG, Synergy Equity and Uptown Development. Any questions?
Questions, go ahead.
Thank you, thanks, Leanne, for that information. I, real quick, is, do some of our TIF districts actually touch then the Springville School Districts? Can you explain that just a little bit?
Yes, okay, so we have urban renewal areas and then depending on the, where the property is located. It will fall within different taxing jurisdictions. So like on the north side of town, you'll hit the Marion Township. There's the Cedar Rapids School District that is on the edge on the east side, west side. And then if you go on the east side, Springville. So there's, yes, yes is the quick answer, but you could pull open, a mall could pull open a map that would actually show you, but.
Yeah, I was wondering the same thing, when I saw the Cedar Rapids School District, so, but you're right, on the west side, there is a portion that's in the Cedar Rapids.
Yep, it's city of Marion, but it's Cedar Rapids School District.
Correct. Any other questions for Leanne? Yes.
This was extremely beneficial for me because I always argued with myself this TIF thing. And it's finally gelled up with this presentation, thank you.
I'm glad to hear it. For others, it might seem repetitive, but I always think it's great to go back to the basics.
Well, I, I, I don't know that we've received one that's this comprehensive in terms of even showing. Which ones are going to be expiring and, you know, in this, in this format, I mean, I, so I really, I appreciate it also. Think it's good to see that and, and the example you used is also a very good example. Because we often, people often get confused and think that TIF means that, you know, the company's getting a full.
Tax break.
Tax break, you know, their, 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 their taxes are just being forgiven somehow. But they're still paying taxes on that initial. Value of their property and the increment, the, the benefit is on the increment that they're creating. Which wouldn't happen without the project happening. So it's, it's, it's a benefit to the city and I like how you showed that it still rises even during the benefit period. So, and unlike what some other cities do, Marion doesn't just give an automatic TIF. There are other cities that, where it's automatic if you're doing a project. But we really use it very wisely and we're very judicious, judicious about it. We have a set of criteria that, that the project has to fit into and qualify. It, but for test is, is a big part of that and then public, you know, public benefit is a part of that. So I appreciate everything that your department does and this was a very good presentation. Any other questions for Leanne?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, does that take care of A nine also then, Leanne? Okay. Moving on to public safety, there's nothing marked under public safety. Are there any questions on those?
Your Honor, if I could.
Yes.
C three, there's just, there's a typo in there, I just wanted to point it out. In the summary, the bid is actually twenty-three, eight seventeen, but for some reason they've got twenty-eight, eight seventeen in there. And I didn't catch it till right before the meeting and neither did Rachel, for that matter, but, but I'll have that changed before Thursday.
Okay. Thanks for pointing that out, okay. Any questions on C one through three? Okay, under Parks, D one and two are not marked, any questions on those? Okay, D three. Mr. Sashel.
Good evening. I wanted to bring this forward to council, this was a contract agreement approved by Park Board. For salvage harvest in Legion Park, so as you know, we're doing a salvage harvest in Foxwoods. There's woodland areas within Legion Park that didn't qualify under the FEMA for cleanup. And so we wouldn't be, get reimbursement for. And the amount of work that's done is beyond our scope that we can do in-house. This is the more, the most feasible. Option that we, we can go through and get this area cleaned up. So this would be a contract with Ben Bergman. There would be no expenditures being, being made. In fact, there would actually be revenue that would come through the city. But obviously, when we do the salvage harvest, the main idea is, is to be able to get the down material and the, the hazard material out of there. It would go up for sale and auction, I mean, sold. There is a lot of material that's, that's hazardous within there. And so wanted to bring, bring it forward because a lot of community members will be asking what type of activity would be going on in there. Because it looks like, oh, we're just taking things out. But that's not the intent and purposes of the project, is to be able to clean it up. And get it to a manageable state, so we can, one, get the disc golf course back. And then also so we can maintain invasives and be able to do our replanting and reforestation as possible. This project is to start this winter, should be done within this winter. We'll have communication go out at that same time. But again, any, any concerns or anything like that, that could be pushed back to the Parks Department. Our city arborist will be overseeing this project, so. Any questions?
To, to, to be clear, this, this is on public land and you're not, you're not clearing the way for development, like.
We, this is on public land, we're not clearing, in, in the future, yeah, and the future plans is to be able to work with, with the different organization partners to reforest and replant in this, but this is all.
I was joking because that question came up when we were doing the work on the, on the trail. And so, just, just to be clear, this is on public land, the city's doing this for, for obvious purposes.
Yes.
That are needed, so, okay.
Yep, and the same work is being, being done right now in Foxwoods and that was approved last year.
Sure. Go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, two questions, Seth. One is, you mentioned that there's some, some hazardous materials, is that vegetation that is in there?
Yeah, so it'd be all, all trees, essentially, so, I mean, I do, you know, if you look at the, the newest satellite aerials. Like Google Earth has, you can see all the down material, but there's still standing material that, one has exposed hardwood, split. That we wouldn't necessarily see until you get up, up close and personal to it. So we would need to be able to remove those, because last thing we want is to put the disc golf course back and have trees falling.
Okay, that's, they're, they're hazardous because they're, they're structurally challenged.
Yes.
Sometimes you can't see the fracture in a tree, but it looks like it's healthy, but, you know, the experts can tell, right?
Good, okay, that, that's a great clarification. And I guess the second question that I had is, is it the same firm or individual that's working in Foxwoods?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yeah, and so they'll be able to move on it pretty, pretty swiftly.
Okay, so there, it's not a altogether independent mobilization?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions for Seth?
Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. I am shocked that Mr. Barkle has nothing marked under engineering. This is a first. Because usually every item is marked. Any questions on the engineering items?
Well, yeah, let's fix that, Your Honor, I have ten or twelve questions here.
Any questions on any of the engineering items? Okay, we'll move on to community development. Again, no items are marked by staff, any questions on those?
Your Honor.
Yes, go ahead.
Just so you know, we will be moving F two, the Abraham will be moving that from consent to our regular agenda on Thursday. Quite a bit of public comment on that one.
Good idea.
Will be here, so we'll, we'll move that to the regular agenda, so they, they get the full attention of the council on, on that consideration.
Okay, thanks for letting us know. Yes, go ahead.
So prior to the meeting, having a bit of dialogue on that item, and I guess my fundamental question is. Since part of the correspondence that's been received is, is relating that that's a private development, private street. Winslow Court, I think, is the street name. And so now the question came up, if, you know, the basis for neighbor objection to that. I'd like to have some clarity about whether or not. Any covenants associated with the properties apply to. As an input to our final decisioning on this.
I'll jump in and if Tom, I know he added some items and Kara may have some legal ease on that as well. At the planning and zoning commission last week, several, I think everybody was in attendance, as I recall. Several brought up the issue of they have covenants on the property that prohibit some of the items that the applicant wishes to, wishes to do, mainly the split. As was explained at the meeting, is the city is not part of these private covenants, these are typically regulations above and beyond the city regulations. They're nevertheless, there are always more.
They're a private contract.
They're a private contract.
Between the owners, and so.
Correct, the city's never been part of this, we were never a signer of these covenants. So the longstanding position of the city is, we're not a party, we can't enforce. If, you know, we're approving it based on city code and city code does allow the split subject to all the items to review for. So the question, the question is, is, you know, do we have any, any review of that? Historically, we have not had any review of the covenants, we don't have access to them, nor do we enforce them. That is really a, a civil matter between those property owners and, and how they deal with it amongst themselves, whether it be through arbitration or through the court system. So we've always taken a very hands-off approach. I think Mr. Harper's question is, you know, does that weigh in the council's decision? I, historically, it has not, at least from staff's recommendation, so. This split will obviously probably create some conflict with those covenants, as the owners have stated. They've indicated they have them, they've never provided them, it's about a thirty-year-old development. Talked to one gentleman, he says they are still, they have the automatic renewal, as most covenants do. But again, I have not seen them, so, and whether they've been revoted on, I have, you know, no knowledge of that either, so I can't, I can't.
Okay.
Say with certainty that they're, what they do and do not say, other than what they, the folks have indicated.
So I, I guess what I'm just thinking and I'll just leave it with this. So whatever our decision ends up being in final form. There is a matter or a pathway for recourse that is available to the residents, should they disagree with what our decision is.
Correct.
If there are covenants enforced that put a prohibition on this.
Yes, the mayor, Kara, might be able to talk a little bit more about covenants and real estate law in that respect, more than I can, but yes.
I'm going to ask Renee if she still has a question, I, I think you had your hand up, but.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, like Grant, I had questions about the covenants because I've spoken with two. Owners, you know, who live on the street and so, yeah, and I know they're planning to come Thursday, so Dave's answer was helpful with that. I think they're planning to bring that, but it sounds like that hasn't been factored in before, so that's interesting. Yeah, so it was about the covenants, thank you.
Okay.
And I, I should add, the, the commission did review this last week and they did recommend approval of the request.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I don't want to be giving legal advice to the residents, I think they can seek their own, their own legal advice on that. But the city's job is to, is to deal with what our ordinances say. And if something qualifies in our ordinances, something that's a private contract between the homeowners. Those covenants and restrictions of whether or not they're still effective and, you know, how they're enforced. It's really a private, private matter for a private action that really is not the city's purview. So go ahead, Tom.
Yes, I, I do think it's worth, and, and I'm, I only bring this up in the fact that we don't see a lot of replats. So this is a replat of a final platted lot. So generally, what we see is a preliminary plat that comes through, it may have thirty lots. And then the first addition comes in, which is a final plat, that creates the lot of record. That requires the public improvements to occur, that establishes the ability for someone to buy and develop. Now, that locks in that preliminary plat. So anybody who buys a lot is going to look at the preliminary plat and the final plat. And they'll see that that development will occur in this manner. Any changes after that have to run through the planning commission and the city council. So there is, there is a process upon which there are some assurances provided with a preliminary and a final plat. And I, and I think people in a neighborhood appreciate when that preliminary plat gets locked in. And if there's changes that get made, they're, they're made aware of those, similar to this situation. Except what this is, is we've had a final plat in the lot, the development is completely built out. It was only four lots, but nonetheless, it is a final plat. So the replat of that lot is kind of opening that door up. So, you know, while I understand there's no legal recourse or requirement that the city follow. But I do think that the, the idea and the intent behind plating and that conversation and that piece is important for the council to understand. So as a lot owner, you, you buy a lot in a final plat. You have some assurances that the final plat will not change. And the recourse that the owner has that wants to replat it is to come back and replat. And that's why we have the ability, and we're hearing now from the public, and that process is we notify those in the neighborhood of what's going on, so.
I'm, I'm glad you, you brought up that distinction and, yeah, I, I mean, that's a whole separate consideration. That's certainly a valid consideration for the city council to, to, to look at that aspect of it. Which is a different consideration from what some of the owners are, are saying is, well, our covenants say this. Well, the covenants are really not something that, that concerns the city. But what you're talking about is, is a very valid consideration, just in terms of, well, you know, the, we, we relied on the fact that it was final platted. When we bought our house or we bought our lot or whatever, so.
Yeah.
It, those, yeah, and so thanks for bringing up that distinction. Go ahead, Colette.
So along those lines, can you give us any, Tom, any insights on, have we done something like this before in the city, right? Has there been any precedent set? And sort of more broadly speaking, from your perspective and your expertise. Are there other things we should be considering and making this decision?
Well, I mean, as you think through the, the considerations, I, while we don't enforce covenants. There's certainly something to be said for a development that was supposed to occur in a certain manner, that's to what the developer's intent was. It does meet the subdivision regs as proposed, but it certainly goes through a process to be approved. We do a replat of a final platted lot. I was gonna say, the most recent one I remember, I think everybody will recognize, is on Tenth Street North. Right before Lau Park, there was a dark brown home, it was on about two acre lot, got subdivided and a very, very nice home got built right south of that one. It's right between Excelsior and Lau Park, they're on the, the west side of the road, that was just done. That was a county subdivision, same situation, got subdivided down three years ago. Four years ago, two, three years, somewhere in that ballpark, so that was the most recent one, I think, probably the most visible one. It, it happens once every few years, that, it's not very often that we get these large lots, residential lots that can be further subdivided. They're, they're almost all old county lots, I think.
So what I'm hearing is we have done it in the past.
At least once in recent.
Okay.
History.
Okay.
Renee, you have a question?
Sorry, couldn't find my mouse. Yeah, I just wanted to add on, you know, I appreciate what you said, Mayor, about, you know, the covenants are something we don't get involved in. We're kind of following the ordinances. But I think based on what Tom brought up in terms of the final plat being approved when these were one acre lots. Allows this council to be able to look at this a little differently. And maybe we're not leaning on the covenants, but we're leaning on the intention of the neighborhood, the impact to Marion. The, what else did I write down? The character of the neighborhood and then traffic patterns, which were one of my concerns. So when I'm looking at this, I'm looking at it through the lens of what is best for Marion. And that's the traffic pattern and the character of the neighborhood. And then also the people who are impacted and, and so, you know, I still, I stand by where I was. I hope people will consider that I think we have an open window to, to use our judgment here, because if not. if we're just gonna enforce things based on the ordinances, we don't need a council, right? I mean, everything's by the book. This is where we're elected to look at these types of situations and use our judgment. And so I would just encourage council to keep an open mind when there are more things brought Thursday to this discussion by the neighborhood, because I, I just, I'm worried that this is gonna set precedent in terms of original intentions, and I, I just, I think what Tom said is important and, and gives us that room and space to not just push it through because the ordinance says that we can. Thanks.
I agree, and I wasn't at all saying that, that this should be rubber stamped, because if it meets the ordinance, I mean, we, we don't do that with many other situations, so I don't know why, why we would do that here. I mean, we should put some thought into it, of course. I just wanted to make the distinction between covenants and ordinances, and, and, and the point that Tom brought up in terms of final plat, so, in terms of what you're basing your decision on, so. Grant, go ahead.
Yeah, just, I think we discussed this, I, what, on Tuesday the second or Thursday the fourth?
Regarding the driveway access that was approved back on, you know, November fourth.
Okay, it was the fourth, and when, when did the residents receive notification of this consideration?
For planning and zoning commission, well, for this one, and it, it went out Wednesday. So they would have probably hopefully received it Friday, Saturday, depending on the mail service. It's been a little slow lately, I've been hearing, so.
Yeah. So, I guess the, the new input is, the commentary from the neighborhood is what, what we're taking benefit at this point. That's a fair statement.
Yes, sorry. All right.
Go ahead, Will.
Thank you. When we discussed this two weeks ago, I was in favor of allowing the driveway. But I did ask, remember, I did ask that if there was any comments from the neighbors. At the time, there was not. And now that we have comments from all the neighbors, that are all in opposition to it, I'm gonna be, just so people know, that was a big deal, what the, the neighbor, neighborhood thought, in my mind. And now they're all against it. I'm gonna be changing my opinion on this to, to be in favor of what the neighbors are saying, that they're not in favor of the subdividing of the lot, just. That was, that weighed heavily on my mind, is what the neighbors were thinking about the situation, and obviously they're not in favor of it. Thanks.
Okay, other comments? Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, I think, and I voted no last time as well, and we'll do so again this time. Again, the biggest reason I looked at it last time was not as much about the traffic issue, but because the replat just simply did not fit in with the neighborhood. And yes, we may have precedent where it's been done before, but there's probably incidents where that replat would still fit in with the neighborhood. In this situation here, I don't believe it does, and should not be allowed.
Other comments, questions? Any more discussion on this item? Okay. Okay. All right, I think, was that everything under community development? All right, library, one item is not marked on page five. Any questions? Not, we'll move on to the next part of the consent agenda. Any questions on any of those items? If there are, I would let the mayor, Pro Tem, handle the discussion. Okay, moving on with the regular agenda, administrative services, page six and page seven. No items are marked. Are there questions on any of those? Okay, now to engineering, we have some items marked.
And you thought I wasn't gonna speak? So items E1 and E2 are regarding a request for stop signs. Based on the traffic report, there have been no accidents there in the past ten years at either intersection. So staff is not recommending adding stop signs at this point. There were some vegetation issues in the past, and that has been taken care of by the Public Service and Parks Department. So again, we're recommending no action at this time. If city council felt that you still wanted to have the stop signs installed, I need to know that so that we can add that as a, an item on the agenda for Thursday. Otherwise, there won't be an item for adding the stop signs.
So remind us, was there, was there an actual petition for this?
There was.
Yeah. So the neighborhood wants it?
Some of the neighborhood does. I can tell you some of the neighborhood that we notified of the public comment period, that'll be Thursday, are very much against the stop signs, so I think you have a split neighborhood again.
Okay, questions? Are you looking for direction of whether or not to put it on the agenda?
Yeah, I mean, if you want me to put the, the two resolutions on there for the stop signs, I can, to be either voted up or down. But if council's leaning towards voting them down, then we don't need to put them on the agenda and create two resolutions that don't go anywhere.
Anyone feel differently? Renee, go ahead.
Yeah, I, sorry, you know, the, I can't say how I totally feel like that I, I'm totally against the Erica, Bruce, like, I'm not, I, I don't see that, right? But possibly Bruce and Eastview, I don't know. So if, you know, that's just where I'm standing. I have an open mind about that particular spot from a, you know, higher traffic, you know, Eastview is obviously a much, because it's connected on the, all the way east-west, I think there's just more traffic probably flowing through. So I would be open to hearing that discussion. I don't know if that warrants you putting it on, or how anyone else feels, but you were doing a temperature check. That's where I'm at.
Anyone feel the same? Go ahead.
So, just to clarify, Renee, you're, you're saying have discussion on Eastview and Bruce?
Well, I don't know if it can even be split apart, but Mike just wanted to know if it should make it on the agenda or not for Thursday, and I don't really see a good argument for Bruce and Erica, particularly two stop signs at the same time. You know, maybe one, maybe the busier one. I would be open to that, but I don't even know if this can be split up.
Just, do we, is there more energy from the residential respondents around one or the other?
Well, the petition had both. The couple of comments that we have received back were generally in disagreement with both. How they would be written, if they were on the council agendas, they would each be their individual resolution irregardless. So I could put both of them on there, and both could be either voted down, or one could be voted up, and one could be voted down. It's up to the city council.
Will, go ahead.
Mike, it sounded like you said that you were anticipating folks for the public comment period that would be against it on Thursday. Is that correct?
I have heard that there were gonna be people show up that were going to, to speak against them at the public comment period per a phone call I've received.
I, then, I would say to have them on the agenda, if, if there's folks who are anticipate, or are expecting it to be on there. And then I would say we put it on there so that we can have the discussion, because right now, all we see is the people on the petition wanting it, and then, what, we get one or two letters against it? So if there's gonna be some folks coming for that comment period, I would, I would like to have it on the agenda so we can hear from them.
Okay, Colette?
I would advocate to keep it on the agenda, agenda as well. Mike, when you all talked about it in the tack, did you talk about pulling it apart? Was there any conversation about, well, what if we did one, as it, you know, as opposed to doing both?
Since they both have such, I mean, yes, one intersection does have a little bit more traffic, but since neither has had an accident in ten years, there's not really a warrant that justifies to install the stop signs. Again, when they get put on city council agendas, they will be separate resolutions, so you act on each one individually.
I think that.
So I hear, I hear you, right? My question was to sort of dig into the conversation that happened in tack, and if it was more about not just a, these together, but if we pulled these apart. And I think what you've said to me is, you did have that conversation, and your recommendation still would not be different. Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Okay.
If it warranted doing different things on, on, on each one, they would have come back with.
Yeah, I would have come back with a recommendation of, we recommend installing a stop sign at this intersection, but not the other.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Did everyone get a chance to weigh in on it that wanted to? I think there are enough people that would like to see it stay on the agenda. I'd rather err on that side.
Yeah, I mean, the two items will stay on the agenda. It's just whether you want the two resolutions for the stop signs on there. So the, the items that are on there today, the, the public comment period and receiving final attack report, they will stay on city council. So you'll still have the public comment. The main question is, do you want me to add the two resolutions on the council agenda for these individual stop signs?
Okay, and if we didn't have them on this agenda, that, we could have them on a future.
You can give a motion to add it to a future council meeting.
After we hear the comments and all that?
Yep. Right, Rachel?
There's no urgency on deciding it. Like, we could hear the comments tomorrow, and then, or Thursday, and then have it put on an agenda later?
I don't know.
I see, I see the city attorney saying yes.
Yes, there's no rule that you have to have the public comment or a public hearing the same day that you make the decision. You just have to hold certain public hearings, and generally, the only requirement is that the public hearing happened before the action is taken.
And how does it be put, how does it get put on a, on an agenda? We have to actually make a motion to, or, or, I guess, I think.
No.
We would just ask that it be put, or I, I can ask that it be put
Yep.
on the agenda. Okay, Will, go ahead.
I would say to have the resolutions on the agenda, because again, we have a petition with, of twenty-some people that want it. And then if, if, if some of those folks come and speak at the public comment period and, and persuade us to vote in favor, we should have it on the agenda since it's, uh, those resolutions on the agenda, since it is being brought up on Thursday, in my opinion on that.
Go ahead, Renee.
Yeah, I just, you know, I think Will made a great point. I wish I would have beat him to it, but the fact that people are interested in this is the reason to leave it on, and I, I personally think we should vote on it one way or the other Thursday, because the public will be there. Both sides probably will be hearing it fresh, and I, I don't know, I, I don't wanna make them come back, right? In a couple of weeks to put it on again. I don't know what other deliberation. So I would vote to put them on, and either vote them up or down Thursday.
Yeah, that's fine. I, I just didn't know if people wanted more time to think about it after hearing the comments, and then maybe driving out there, checking it out, whatever, but, or having time to talk to the residents, you know, between, after, after the hearing and, so, okay, I think, is there an opposition to having it on the agenda, having the resolutions on the agenda? Anybody opposed to that? Okay. E3.
All right, so, segment seven is the segment that we're currently under design, and we almost have the acquisitions complete on. That is the section basically from Menard South to the, the corporate limits. Segment eleven would be the area that would be behind Bowman Meadows along Dry Creek, and this would basically be the westerly most boundary. So how the trunk sewer works with the agreement that we have with the existing 2080 is we're not necessarily starting at the bottom where the plant is and working our way north. Instead, what we did was we looked at the hydraulic grade line, or where those pressure points are, and prioritized it based on those issues. So the first segment was actually segment two, and broke that into several phases. Segment seven is the one that's currently under design, and then segment eleven is the next one. After we fix all those sections, then we do a reevaluation to see again where that pinch point is, where the hydraulic grade line or the bottleneck is occurring, a reprioritize, and then go forward with this again, and do whatever section is next. For each section, depending on where we're at, different cities have requested different flow amounts, and based on that percentage of the total project, you pay for your proportionate share. So, west of this limit, now that we get out of Marion, most of those sections west of us, unless there's some future areas that we wanna add to that, we won't be paying for part of that trunk sewer, because we're not using any of that capacity. Same thing with the fact that Lynn County is part of the 2080, even though they're not using any of the, the capacity in there. So what this is doing is, it's approving the contract with Ben, Strand, Kim to do this next section. So you can kind of see, it's the red and the green that's on the screen. The red is the current alignment, and the green is just the preliminary alignment that they threw out there. Obviously, we'll have to look at wetlands, and then endangered bats, and there's also endangered bees that we'll have to evaluate in that section, and that aerial photography was taken before the derecho. So we'll look at that as well, to figure out what that new alignment is. So this is their contract to move forward, and this is split, again, amongst the different municipalities. The city of Marion will upfront the cost, will administer the project, will inspect the project, and then we will send invoices to the other municipalities as we proceed with the project. But being that we're close on segment seven, we wanna go ahead and get segment eleven started, since it has taken a few years. And hopefully try and make up a little bit of time. With this one, it is all on city property except for one parcel. So acquisition should be a little easier. So we are recommending proceeding.
Okay, this has been going on for a while.
With the bats and the bees.
I'm amazed that people can identify, like, an endangered bee. Go ahead, Will.
Thank you. I have a comment and a question. Comment? Nice to, that it can get done after, well, not nice that we have the derecho, but I said it can get done after the clearing of the area, so not as many trees are affected. And then the question is, the old line, does that get removed, or does that just get abandoned and it's there?
For the most part, we will abandon it. Where the manholes are, we take the topsoil mall off and fill it with flowable mortar. But it typically just stays abandoned. There's no reason to go dig it back up unless it's going in the same location. We typically offset them so that the old can stay there while we're installing the new. Otherwise, you have to bypass pump all of that sewer while you're installing it, which adds a significant cost. So by at least paralleling the pipe and leaving the old there in place, since it's functioning today, we can keep that live and in use.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Steve?
Could you just briefly explain for everybody what is the main purpose of replacing that line? So everybody kind of understands the basic premise?
Yeah, so I don't remember exactly what year this was built. The, the sewer that we're replacing in segment seven was built in the nineteen sixties. In that case, we are going from a forty-eight-inch diameter pipe to a sixty-inch diameter pipe. That has all of the flow from Marion and many other jurisdictions that go to it. So this is the sanitary sewer. So this is everything that goes down your wastewater system, and then goes to the treatment plant to be cleaned, and then the water, clean water put back into the, the river system. And so if we don't do these improvements, development will have to stop, because we're getting to the point where we don't have capacity.
So, yeah, the main purpose is to increase the size of the line?
Yes.
Because development has outpaced.
Development and the age of the system.
And the age, okay. Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Okay, thank you, Mike. Community development, F1 is not marked. Any questions on that item? F2?
Yes, this is a revised site plan for the West End Development, the West End Diner, and the subsequent pods on that site. Annette Perry is looking to, doing a couple of things here. First, First, she is looking to add two more additional of those retail pods to the site. There's currently five there. She'd like to add two more for bringing it a total to a seven. Those are the small hundred plus square foot retail units that she's been using in conjunction with West End. And those are leased to local, local artists and local retailers. The second part of the request is basically the, a new sidewalk plan, uh, through the, through the grass yard to create opportunity for a future pavilion, as well as just seasonal tents, whatnot that may come to the site. So you actually have a kind of an internal sidewalk network to kind of support tents or whatever festival type of situation she has. And then the third item is the creation of, um, parking spots, uh, kind of to the east of the diner location. A few months ago, the planning and zoning commission approved a parking lot on the site, uh, which created a total of fifteen spots. It wasn't ideal, but it was adding parking. It sat for a while and she's come back with revised plan to create the, uh, the backend part of the, the backup parking, uh, the angled parking there. So it's going from an approved, uh, planning and zoning commission approved fifteen to a total of thirteen, reducing down to thirteen. But it's still a, I, um, still creating five additional spots that don't exist today on the site. So she's losing some of the parallel parking but replacing it. So she is gaining five spots from what's approved today. We've held a, uh, we held a, a meeting. It was a public meeting, but it was a public hearing. I'm sorry, it was a public meeting. At the last city council, our last planning and zoning commission, there was, uh, some concerns in the neighborhood that we notified just regarding parking as a whole. And I think you received at least two, maybe three correspondents today regarding that. So I do suspect folks will be here at the meeting. I think their number one concern is just parking in the neighborhood. After our commission meeting two months ago, I went out and kind of looked at the neighborhood several times. During the weekday, there was always a place to park. It was crowded, but there's always a place to park within the block. The Saturdays are really tough as you have homeowners home, cars in the parking industry and you have, uh, the weekend traffic. There's no parking or very, very limited parking on, on the site and around the site. So that's been the number one concern for the neighborhood. And I think the petition against, uh, the expansion notes that. It's a, she's increasing the amount of off-street parking, but they're still opposed. Just, it's just the, I think it's just the principle of the point until things are worked out as a whole, what the city can do for parking. It was noted, there is a map on there in the, in the exhibits, uh, that showed all the public parking, uh, little red lines, some public parking lots, as well as on-street parking, uh, that was noted around the site. So there's quite a bit of parking there, but it's, it's just, uh, the success has really created a little bit of a crunch for the neighborhood or what they feel is a crunch of the neighborhood. So they're, they'll likely be here speaking on that. Commission did recommend approval unanimously, uh, last week on the request. And that's, that's the recommendation coming forward.
Okay, questions? Let's see.
Yeah, Dave, can you explain what's happening on the east side? Because with the picture overlay on the diagram, I can't tell there what's.
It's all, it's just sidewalk.
That's all sidewalk?
It's not hiding anything, but some additional sidewalk.
Okay, so in your opinion, does P and Z feel that there's any opportunity to add any more parking on site? Because I'm assuming the three that are being added for the pods are those three that are on the south side between the new parking and the outdoor dining? Are those the three new ones?
Yeah, in, in the count, yeah, the two new ones are the ones to the, the farthest east of that, those first.
Oh, the furthest east are the new ones?
Yeah, are the new ones. So.
Okay.
Uh, and that's just kind of off that sidewalk edge there. The city, sorry, the planning and zoning commission, uh, back in October had approved more part. I mean, they had proved a, Annette had brought forward a parking lot for the, the green space there.
Right.
She doesn't want to lose the green space. Is there opportunity to create a parking lot on the site? Absolutely. The sacrifice is the, is the lawn. And she's been really reluctant to give up the lawn, um, for parking.
Well, I do feel that anytime you're putting a facility or a business of this type where it is surrounded on three sides by residential property, I think there is some responsibility of that business owner to provide, uh, certainly more off-street parking. Now, whether this is adequate enough or not, I mean, whenever, anytime I drive by there, you know, Sixth Avenue is just packed. And I haven't driven around on the other sides, but I'll see the outdoor patio packed. So congratulations, her vision of what she wanted to do out there, that she talked with us a few years ago is happening. I think that's great, but now that is leading into another issue, which I think she does bear responsibility to cover some of that as well. So whether this is enough parking or not, uh, what, what did P and Z talk about as far as any options to provide any additional parking besides what is shown here?
Yeah, the, the, the one, the one major item that came out of the, of the commission was, um, there's two public parking lots. The one west of the Johnos, there's a small one there that's public and then there's a gravel one. I always call it the Draper's Lot because he was always highly focused on that little lot paving it. So there's two public parking lots within about three hundred feet. They're not signed. I mean, there's no, there's nothing that says city parking or there's no wayfinding signs. They, they, they strongly encourage that. That's not something Annette could do, but that's something she, that's something that they felt the city should be doing is getting our public lots signed, especially going forward with our corridor project. So that was number one. Number two, they were just looking at, you know, just long-term parking studies, um, as the success of, uh, the corridor that I think we'll all see in five years. They, they want to make sure that we're accommodating both private parking lots and public parking lots and making sure folks know how to get to them. That was the only, they all, I think they all sympathize with the neighborhood, but when this was developed originally, no parking was required at all. Uh, since the zoning changed, parking is now required for anything new. So she has to create one and a half spot, or she has to create one spot for those two little pods. So she's making that up. That's required. So she's doing that, she's doing one plus for more. So she's exceeding the requirements with her expansion today.
Well, first of all, I mean, you, you brought up one item that is absolutely needed and we've had discussion in the past about a parking study throughout the city. So we all know that is needed. I think the last discussion we had at that, at city council is that that will be done, will be scheduled upon traffic getting back to a normal pattern after the pandemic. So obviously, we didn't want to do that in twenty twenty one. Uh, I'm not sure what the timing is. So I have, I talk to people all the time about parking needed and a parking study needed. And I just tell them, yeah, the study's coming, but, uh, we're not sure when that's going to happen. So, uh, yeah, I'm not sure if this is, you know, I, I think you need this additional parking spots on here, whether it's enough or not. I guess I'm not sure.
Go ahead, Colette.
So I'm along the lines of Steve, uh, West End, great place, right? Good food, good location. I regularly visit there, um, and struggle with parking. So I recognize all of this. First question is, is there, I mean, do you have recommended number of spots? So sort of we have this, our, our, uh, whatever. What am I thinking? Planning and zoning has sort of like this required, right? But is there a recommended number of spots for this type of business?
If this, if this was, if this came in today.
Yep.
With the zoning it has.
Okay.
It would be one space per fifty square feet of the restaurant area. I don't know what that number is. I can find out for you on Thursday. Uh, so it's one for fifty square feet. So easily, almost easily fifteen minimum probably required just for the restaurant, probably more.
Okay.
And then it's going to be, um, one for three hundred square feet for the retail pods. So you're looking at approximately six hundred, um, no, you're looking at about seven hundred square feet there. So you'd be required to have two and a half spots to support the pods.
On site?
On site.
That's, that's not counting street.
It's not count street. That is a hundred percent on, she'd have to provide private parking for that. If it was developed today.
Okay, could you bring that for Thursday, what that, what that number would be?
Yep, that'd be. It'd be some estimates because I don't know how big her restaurant is, but I can get you a very good estimate, I think that'll.
Okay, I think that would be helpful.
Oh, and in addition to that, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to catch you up. One and a half spots for the apartment upstairs.
Oh, my heavens. Okay, so Thursday will be great, right? When you can bring that to us, sort of what that would look like. And I mean, that's my concern in, in moving forward and approving this is just making sure that we're both supporting the good work that she's doing and her investment in the community. But at the same time, acknowledging, as Stephen said, that this development is in the midst of a residential neighborhood. And we certainly don't want our residents to feel put out, right, by this development that's happening. So there's got to be a way for us to sort of meet in the middle. So if you bring that information on Thursday, I think that will help with, with good discussion. That's all I got.
Yeah.
You're on. Okay. Randy first and then, yep, I see that.
Thank you. Thank you. And, and Colette, you might have asked the question I was going to. And that was, um, one of the, one of the documents that received is quoting a code. So you're saying though, that she, this business itself is not in violation of the code as it stands, correct?
How she developed, it was no parking was required.
Perfect.
Legal, but anything she, any expansion going forward, she has to make up that parking.
Correct, and thank you for that because I know that's going to come up on, on Thursday. And then the other thing I would just want to comment is, is because of the success of this, but also too, just as a clarification and notice, notification is, is, uh, these businesses that are, that are providing a lunch menu. If you witness, this is a one car to one person ratio. So if you've got fifty people on site, there's going to be fifty cars. It's a little bit different venue than of a, of an evening venue where you may have two to three or four people, um, per vehicle. So I, I've been there as well too, as a customer. And as you, as we all have witnessed, it's, you know, when you're meeting for those lunch hours, um, it does get a little tight there. So thank you and, and, um, that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Will.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions and comments. So Dave, you're saying that since there was no restrictions on parking when it was built, they do not have to accommodate when they expand? They only have to accommodate for the expansion?
Yeah, correct. They only have to accommodate for the expansion. So if they were to add on a, add on to the restaurant, they'd have to meet that one per fifty square feet rule for the, only the expansion. If she was to bring in a, a six hundred square foot retail spot, she'd need two spots for that new retail. But all the old stuff would be legal, not conforming, be that grandfathered in.
Okay. And then comments are about the thought of people that are going to this location using those city parking lots that are across the street. I don't foresee anybody ever using those if they're coming to this location.
Yeah, the comments that, at the comments that commission was, um, were, you know, you assume at least three employees at the restaurant and you assume at least one employee per pod. So if you have five, if you have six pods and, and three employees in the restaurant, you're at nine. Nine employees, if they are driving, should absolutely be nowhere near the front of the business like any other business in town operates. So if those folks are tying up a, an on-street parking spot within, uh, you know, a hundred feet, that's, that's his bad business. So, uh, we're encouraging employees to park away.
There, I agree with you that they should be doing that, but unfortunately, look at the history at the uptown, most employees don't do that. When I did drive by today to look at the parking situations, I did notice that down by, to the west of the Johnos and that lot, there was no parking. There was nobody there. Nobody parked in it. Um, and I also noticed that there is no walking access, no sidewalk from that parking lot to the sidewalk on Sixth Avenue. So if anybody was parking in that lot, they'd have to go over to Seventh Avenue to get to the sidewalk and to walk all the way around. So maybe if we want to utilize that with the Sixth Avenue side, maybe some sidewalks should be put in that would be cleared. Because in the winter, you wouldn't be able to walk through the grass like you can right now. And then also the parking lot, what you call Draper's Lot, um, when I drove by that today, it was full, but it was all full of J and P plumbing, you vehicles that were not using it accurately. So it, we could, there are more vehicles could have fit in there, but they were not, they were basically taking it all up. So if we want to utilize that, plus, um, kind of going off with the future redevelopment of Seventh Avenue there, maybe that it's time for that parking lot to get paved, to get blacktopped and some lines put down. And maybe it's, and put up a sign that says in both lots, let's say, city parking lot, parking these hours, whatnot. Um, and maybe that one up there, uh, Draper's Lot should have a two-hour time restriction so that it's not utilized by a, a business for parking their vehicles overnight and, and taking up parking for actual people that are coming to the uptown. So maybe it's time for that to happen. I know, like you said, it was Draper's, calling it Draper's Lot because he pushed for that for a long time. But, um, I, I think maybe we should look at that for this, uh.
I think those are excellent, um, points, Will.
Thank you.
Okay, Renee, did you have a, I see your hands not up anymore, but I thought I saw it.
Yeah, no, most of what I had has been answered in the conversation. I might have some more for Thursday, but thank you.
Okay, Grant?
Yes, so just to continue on with the theme that Will was, uh, bringing forward, just for my own clarity, when we use the phrase Draper's Lot, is that the space that is immediately north of Sixth Avenue across from West End?
No, no, it's, um, uh, it's behind, um, that, that, that corner building. I'm forgetting the name. She's for a straighter. It's right to the north of the old pet store.
Yeah.
It's a gravel lot, be behind the Christian bookstore.
Okay.
Well, it's right behind the Roush Building, behind the Christian bookstore.
Yeah, that's their own private, but it's right to the south and west of the Christian bookstore.
Okay, right behind the Roush Building that's kind of dilapidated.
It was a chocolate shop.
The old chocolate shop, yeah.
So one of, one of the, um, it was Mr. Smith's letter. He makes reference to, um, holding off on all of this until such time that the same lot, the planning commission used as a reason to rezone West End property. So in, in that paragraph of his letter, it's, it's suggesting parking lot north of Sixth Avenue across from West End Diner. So I'm, what I guess I'm trying to establish is, was there a commitment made to do something with property? And where is that property?
I'm glad you, I'm glad you brought that up because I forgot about, uh, Mr. Smith is referencing a private lot. I think he was confused on what the public lot is across Sixth Avenue on the north side. It's, it's the one west of the Johnos, the one immediately in north. It's got a couple of, it's got a couple of, uh, containers sitting on it. That's a private lot owned by, uh, uh, half of it's owned by, uh, Zia Johnos folks. I think the other half might still be owned by, uh, Mr. Fillmore, who used to own the VIP. That's a private lot. That doesn't, I think he might be confused on what the private.
That's why I was asking the question to clarify, you know, for certainty of location and then commitment to do something. That's what I was.
Yeah, I think it's just quite, just referencing the wrong site.
Go ahead, Steve. Just to follow up on that, for our meeting on Thursday then, can you have another map showing those two potential public parking lots?
Yeah, I actually have.
So everybody has those clearly outlined.
I have an exhibit already done in the staff report. I'll just, uh, put that as a slide.
Okay, thanks.
So with this, the zoning, the current zoning of this area is different than uptown.
Correct.
It's not the same zoning as uptown.
Correct.
Where there's no, no minimum parking.
Correct.
Other questions? Okay.
Your Honor.
Next item, yes. Oh, go ahead.
Since we're talking about it, I would like to see if we could, uh, direct staff to look into paving that, that parking lot on Ninth Street.
Yeah, I was thinking about that today, if we could at least get some idea of what, I mean, what does it take to get that block topped and, and striped? I don't know. Oh, looks like Tom knows. No?
I may have mentioned it slightly as many times as Mr. Draper has over the years. So we'll, we'll get a quote.
And, and just.
Is that so?
Oh, it'll be a CIP project. Amal will approve it. It'll be good.
And just then, again, your honor.
Go ahead, Will.
As we're, as we're discussing that right now, part of this, the, there, there's a an idea that has been brought to me about potentially, um, the, uh, the Christian bookstore having a gravel parking lot there, maybe some type of agreement could be made with them for parking and paving their parking lot area too, to make it a nice bigger, uh, use where kind of in the uptown where the, uh, shared parking agreements that we have right now, maybe something that could be done there too. That's all.
Do, um, do we ever? Do do we ever, in a situation like this, require or ask the, or I guess maybe it's just up to them, if if the developer that's bringing the proposal, ask them to enter into a parking agreement with another business where they can share their parking lot or, you know, a private agreement that guarantees them the use of of somebody else's space.
Allowed and encouraged in the city code in our parking regulations. So it is something that's.
So that's something they're aware of? That's something that this developer is aware of or?
I don't know. I I don't know if it's been brought up.
Well, yeah, I I think I guess it probably has to come as a requirement for them to go.
Yeah, it's really, yeah, they're allowed to use parking within so many feet, as long as they have the agreements filed with the city and that we know that the agreement exists. And usually it's when they're short. We love, we love for businesses to use the church parking lot during the weekday, and it works out really well. And there's usually a formal agreement for that, but that's usually when we see it.
Yeah, the unfortunate thing is that, you know, every vibrant community in an area has has parking issues. But I mean, this is, this is something that's coming to a residential area. And that's, that's what's creating the friction. So it's not an easy situation on all sides. Okay. Our last item under community development F3, we have people have been waiting patiently through this meeting.
I'm gonna have Nicole go ahead and present us one real quick.
Hi, Nicole.
Good evening. I've got a meeting at seven, so I'm just kind of hanging out anyway. So Brian and Nikki Guild are seeking approval of their central corridor review request for 1367th Avenue. Um, this property is within the UTC one zoning district, which does require to go through the review process when a substantial improvement is being requested for the property. They're specifically requesting two items with this review. One would be exterior alterations. So in the top right image of the front kind of cinder block building there, you can see that they've removed the siding that was previously there already, which has exposed larger windows that did exist at one point. So they are wanting to replace those small windows, enlarge them to what those three original windows were, which were 96 by 72 inches. The second part of this request is for the removal of the rear pole building. So in the photo on the bottom right, the large building with blank walls, they're wanting to remove that. It was damaged during the derecho. With the removal of that building, they will be able to take a look at the site overall. It'll give them a better idea of how to lay out the site for parking, outdoor dining, maybe a potential building expansion. And so that's kind of their reasoning for this request. Because this is, again, within the UTC one zoning district, kind of staff reviews the building form and setbacks, height and pedestrian scale, parking, architectural material for these properties. So for the building setbacks and form, the removal of that rear pole building does put the current legal nonconforming building into more of conformance. So with that rear building currently with our UTC one zoning regulations, we do require a 15-foot rear yard setback when adjacent to residential property. That building is not currently sitting 15 feet from that residential property. So with the removal of that, it will be brought into more of a conformance. That front building is still gonna be that legal nonconforming just because it's not gonna meet that front five-foot minimum setback off that front property line in this zoning district, which is, it's fine. It's grandfathered in from the previous zoning. And then as far as height scale, with the removal of that large rear pole building, again, it's got the blank walls that are unattractive. They do not promote a pedestrian-oriented built environment. However, the enlargement of those windows on that front building will help enhance that. Parking, architectural style and materials are not a part of this request. The Applekins do know when they have that final kind of plan in place for the overall site, again, the layout of the parking and the outdoor dining, once they have the interior floor plan kind of designed out, they know where all the doors are gonna be located. It will come back through the central corridor review process for the commission and council to review what that site looks like along with any additional changes to the exterior facade. We did receive one citizen call prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. They were just wanting to know general information on this request. Um, staff wasn't available at that time, but they were directed to report, and we did not hear back from them. Um, the commission at their meeting last Tuesday did recommend approval of the corridor review for the enlargement of those three windows back to the original sizes and removal of that rear pole building. So questions of staff on this?
Questions? Go ahead.
Not a question, but super excited about sweet cheesecake. Thank you.
Having taken care of at least half a half of one of those cheesecakes last week, I I have to second that. Go ahead.
Yeah. So just, so I understand, so the pole building would be removed.
Correct.
The front-facing building, windows enlarged, and then future determination of how the space will be utilized, where that was once occupied by the pole building, will be made based on.
Yeah. We've seen some concepts from them, which includes kind of that area being some parking, some outdoor seating, some maybe building expansion just for additional room that they might need in their kitchen space. It's all things that they're wanting to figure out and get a better sense of when that building comes down in the back.
But at this point, the pole building is nothing but an impediment.
Yeah, go ahead, Randy.
I just had a quick comment. I wanted to say how exciting it is to see this come back into a retail establishment and kudos to you folks. I remember when this used to be an old used appliance facility that loitered our our streets with not not attractive looking things. So this is super exciting. Thank you for taking the interest in rehabilitating some of these properties that need a little TLC.
I think it's a, it's a major improvement to the site. And it is exciting to see a business that's started in a home and has grown so much that they need to move to a, you know, full commercial location and and to be able to do that while repurposing and recycling this this site. I think it's it's a win-win for everyone and for the city. So congratulations on on your success. Any questions, other questions? Everyone needs to try the cheesecake. It's really good. All right, I guess no other questions. We'll move on to discussion regarding redistricting.
I'll give everybody a chance to escape before this one. It's might be lost. I'll go quick, I'll go quick. Before I get started, everybody should have had one of these in on their at their chair. So help Terrell follow along. If you do want to talk about one of the pages, there's an old number up top. Just let us know the numbers so Terrell can find the right screen so the folks at home can see it as well, please. It'll help us keep on the same same page. This, this is the local redistricting, it's done every 10 years with the release of the census. Census was way late due to the arguing over the questions and then COVID. So we're actually about four or five months behind where we're normally at. The state approved the House districts November 5th, so we have 60 days, November 4th. Well, we have 60 days from when they when they approved it to approve ours. So we're on a very tight little window here, and I'll lay out the schedule here at the end after we go through the maps. The council recall, we worked with Lynn County Auditors, they drew up the maps. So staff, council didn't have anything to do with the initial maps. Ultimately, this council approves the maps, but the actual creation of them was done kind of outside the city. As we go forward on the slides, there'll be a heavy dash line, that's a House district that's already been approved. So that ward in the southwest corner of the city is locked in. So we're really only gonna be talking about three wards tonight. That southwest ward, the one that's yellow there on the existing map, that's locked in. We can't, can't really move anything about it. So three wards we're talking about tonight, and that's indicated with a with a heavy dash line. So we've gone next slide, Terrell. We're gonna be looking at four ward plans and a couple of different precinct plans that the county prepared. If they would have provided just one one word map, so this is your map, it'd be a lot easier, but they gave us three, so we got a lot to discuss. This, from my initial staff report, a lot of things have changed because we we found a lot of data errors with the county maps and their numbers. So ignore the staff report. Unfortunately, it evolved a lot since Thursday as we started working on it and really getting into the numbers. This is Ward One Plan. As you can, and you can see the heavy black line on the map might be show up a little easier in your packet. That's the House district. So we that what is labeled as Ward One, the blue, can't be moved. This one proposes 18 precincts. And it has an ideal ward population of 10,383. That number's important because we're only allowed to deviate about just under 1,040 from that number 10,383. I've kind of broken down the population of each ward and kind of want to go over that a little bit. Ward One, the blue, is at the 10,69, it's a little over the ideal ward population, only 414. Ward One will likely be the ward that grows the slowest. And the only growth you'll really see is through redevelopment. So the multifamily projects, it'll have some really quick growths here and there, but it'll be a little bit more sporadic than the other three. So actually having it be a little larger than the ideal population or the other wards is fine. It'll allow it to stay even longer with our, I'm gonna call our three growth wards, our new growth wards. Ward Two is the green. You can see that's under our ideal population. Again, I think that's fine. Ward Two is gonna grow rapidly like it has for the last few years. So starting at a deficit is fine. It'll definitely catch up with the others. Ward Three is almost right on our ideal population at 20. Ward Three will keep going pretty fast. Ward Four gets a little bit of a head start. It's also a high growth. Unfortunately, there's only so many ways we can move the lines. We could get this map down to everybody being within 20 minus Ward One. But we're trying to stick the lines, the warden lines on major streets, collectors, miners, arterials. I don't want to wind it through the neighborhoods. And if you get everything really tight, it's gonna get out of whack really fast, just based on how we're growing. So the wards will get unbalanced, they're probably, they probably be unbalanced the minute we adopt it. So that's Ward Plan One. I don't want to focus on precincts too much because that's really a county function, but we do have to approve them as well. This ward allows growth in three of the four districts, like I said. And I think that's important to keep, kind of important to notice. And this is the map that I would recommend just solely from population growth because it allows the most equal, I use that word equal kind of loosely, but most equal growth. So it allows a window, again, for three of the four wards to grow. And again, Ward One will grow just with all the apartment projects we're seeing. Move on to the next slide, which will be slide three, if you're following on paper. Yes, I'm sorry.
Can you go back to that real quick?
Yep, back to Ward One or Plan One.
What's, yeah, what's the red dashed line area?
Yeah. Sorry, the the image that went out on the staff report, the county math ended up being way wrong. They gave us a really a bad map and bad numbers. So that area in red was the area I had them pull over into Ward Three to bring the numbers up to get it to get it within the 1,038 variance allowed. They were about 1,000 wrong in violation of the code. So that's just a correction from what went out in the initial packet. And then that little height, that that dark blue line, that's a, that's actually in the city limits. The county left that off on all our maps. So that was just noted. It's only gonna add probably about three people, so it's insignificant in terms of population on all these maps.
So the, sorry, but again, the the red line or the red, so the the line will actually be on 31st and not 35th.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on, you have Ward Two, Ward Two Plan and Precinct One Plan. I'm not gonna go to, as you understand the metric, the math there now, what we're looking for, so I won't go through that this time. This map, unfortunately, landlocks, what is proposed is Ward Three. And you'll notice the ward numbers changes and the colors change. That's a county, that's how they set it up. I didn't, I didn't do that, but the ward numbers can be changed as we go into it to reflect something as close to what we have today. So I understand the ward numbers change, the colors change, but that doesn't mean anything. That's just what the county gave us. So this one allows Ward One and Two to continue to grow, landlocks two, or I'm sorry, landlocks number three. Ward Three is almost outside the Bowman Woods area, we're almost fully developed. So Ward Three will fall behind the growth of the, really, the other three districts pretty fast. And we'll get in balance, I think, fairly, fairly quick. And that's 18 districts. And again, Ward Plan Two, again, this is the same ward, it's just a different precinct plan. And again, the precincts are just slight variations, and that's just for county functions for voting locations and whatnot. Again, we can talk about precincts if you want, but I've been very focused on the wards. This one does have a little pot, this one does have a little error error right by the number three. I've kind of highlighted it in red, kind of hard to see. Oh, I'm sorry, Terrell, can we go to the next slide? There you go. This one had a little population error that I caught this morning, so the the numbers changed a little bit. Again, pretty insignificant for the totals. Next slide, Terrell. Ward Three, Precinct Plan One, again, kind of more of the same as the previous one. It in a landlocks, what is identified as Ward Four, the purple area, that's almost, again, fully developed. It'll get out a balance pretty fast, and it only allows a growth in really in one and three. And then the next slide, that'd be number six, if you're following along on the paper. Unfortunately, we caught a pretty big error on this one, and I wasn't able to get the correct numbers from the county before the meeting. And it's just a precinct there. It doesn't, it doesn't affect the ward, it didn't change the wards at all, it just kind of affects the, actually, this one could affect the wards. A little knob of purple sticking out, shining the red, that has to find a new home. It either shifts to Ward One or has to stay in Ward Four, and the numbers are out of whack. So I couldn't calculate it correctly by this time of this meeting occurred. So before we go to the next slide, so those are really have, you have three ward options, a lot of different precinct options, 17 versus 18 precincts. And that's just for the county to try to find locations. They can combine precincts, voting locations for the the smaller, non-presidential election year ones. They they combine precincts all the time. The presidential one, they'd have to get creative with churches or civic buildings to host a precinct there. But the ward balances, again, going back to Ward Map One, from a growth perspective, that's the one that makes the most sense. It keeps it probably, I think will keep it equal the longest. Allows for the three of the four to grow with new construction. And again, I think that that southwest ward currently, Colette's Ward, we'll see a lot of growth anyways with the apartment projects, some of those redevelopments. They're all within the allowable variants of 1,040 roughly, which is required by state code. So those are the, those are really the three options we have as the county presented. You can, you can love one, hate them all. We can move lines, but we do have a timetable. There is a crunch, like I said. We can get these things within by 10 people each, but it's gonna cut through neighborhoods. And I like, we do like to stay on major roads, rivers. It really makes a nice clean map when your neighbors are crossing on, when you cross 31st Street, it's a different, it's a big border. So it it feels natural there. If you go on to the next slide, Terrell. Thank you. This is our schedule, December 8th is actually December 9th. For the city council meeting, that'll be our public hearing, which we're setting on this agenda for next meeting. This is an ordinance, so there'll be three readings. So we can do the second one, December 21st. That's the, that's the Tuesday meeting before Christmas. We can do the second, second reading. You have the options of waive the third reading or set a special meeting to have that third reading. January 4th would be our next opportunity, it would be a city council work session to get the third reading kind of naturally. That's also our deadline, and I don't like to play it that close. It just, in some case, something comes up, I get a little bit of time to react. The January 6th regular meeting is too late. So so on Thursday, I pretty much need direction on which map you like. Which map you guys want to go with? I've got to create 18 legal descriptions, 17 or 18 legal descriptions for each precinct. To create the legal description for the wards, uh that takes a little bit of time, and then I gotta have Nicole and Kasia trace my work to make sure I did the legal descriptions correctly. Um, so I really need a commitment on Thursday, which ward you like or which ward you like, subject to these changes. Um, and that gives me enough time to create these legal descriptions before the ninth.
Will that be by vote, we would vote, would there be a resolution?
Well, we right now, I think we have a motion, um how do we have that, we're motion directing staff to proceed with ward X precinct. Plan X, so it is, so just giving me some direction on which way you wanna go.
What are you looking for tonight?
Presentation of the material, take any questions you may have about any of the maps. Uh, population growth, if you have more legalese questions, we'll turn it over to Karen to address any of those, how how elections work.
On Thursday, then s- someone would need to make a motion to accept. Map X.
Yep.
And then we vote on it.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanna be sure everybody understands what the process is, uh you have a question, Randy?
I did, uh if I'm looking at these right, Dave, we're looking at. I see the the cover page, so let's just refer to these pages, so number two is way it is. This was what is now, or this is what the first.
No.
Revised from the county was?
Yeah, cover page one. That i- this is the cover page, I guess, this is the existing map today on page one.
So, so then the four we're looking at, and and I'm gonna, I just wanna throw something out here because. We all know the growth of how our city's going, and so as I look at page five, which is showing. It would be just totally opposite of what we were just talking about, having. Lower numbers, but yet this is kinda like my world of investments, the minute you print something off, it is obsolete. Because it, the numbers are just totally off, but if you take a look at ward one, what what they're showing is proposed ward one. It's down to ten thousand one nineteen, and then you take a look at ward, what I'm most concerned about here is um. Giving that ward four a bigger piece of the pie today because of the growth, cuz we're not gonna see these. Change again other through a special census, and even if we do a special census, it doesn't mean that they're, we're gonna rezone or re.
Correct.
Reboundary again, so we could see this thing sitting stagnant for many, 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 many years. But yet, we're gonna see those territories of three and one grow exponentially, correct?
I I think so, yes.
I mean, I'm just looking at this through a glass of saying. Though they look small today, we know that tomorrow, these numbers are changing drastically, I don't know if that's even permissible to look at it. From that perspective, would that throw the numbers off by deviation enough to say it's not allowable?
Well, we we can get out of deviation, as soon as it's adopted, we could, it, once we, we're we're gonna get it, we're gonna get out of that variant, that allowance. Really quick, that's okay, as long as we're within the allowance on the, on the day we adopt, we're good. And I mean, in, I can, I I did the map by hand in two thousand, when we were out of whack, year one, cuz I got it, unfortunately, I didn't understand it, I got tight. The last twenty ten, we actually were, we didn't get out of sync until about the, I think it was about two and a half, three years after it adopted, then it just got. Way out of sync again, um this, and I mean, all these maps, I mean, well, I map one really does allow for that. It gives a bonus to grow, it gives a little bonus to the districts that aren't gonna grow as fast, so it gives them a head start. So we might be able to stay equal wards for maybe five years or six years before it starts to get.
And we would, we would wanna be prepared for the other shoe to drop, and that is, is if we're to see the economy change and obviously our growth were to just instantly stall out overnight. Uh, on the residential side, suit to us, I, I wanna make sure we're protecting ourselves from that backside, but I I just wanted to throw that out for some. Some forecasting, I guess, if you will, as to uh what those, cuz these numbers that we're dealing with are, I mean. These were census dates that are now two years old, so, thank you, that's all I had.
Go ahead, Collette, and then we'll go to Grant.
Okay, um not necessarily a question on the maps, but why is the ward one or ward two or ward four? Depending upon the map you look at, why is that already locked in, can you?
Yeah, yeah, it, the current, your current word one, the the, on this map, it's the blue one here.
Yep.
You can, I don't think you can see the black dash line on there.
Right.
That's the adopted house district, uh state house district, so we're not allowed to put a ward. Over that.
Two districts.
Correct, so that one's locked in, and it it was locked in, uh if you go back to the very first slide, Terrell. Yeah, there, the yellow one there, that was actually the boundary of the old, of the previous house district, so that was locked in, so we're kinda working around.
Because of the house district.
Yes.
And those requirements, okay.
Yep, so that's why we're only focusing really on the three other wards.
That's helpful, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah. Go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, so the um, the variation one thousand three oh eight, that's just a design standard for right now.
Correct, that's the one that was adopted for this cycle.
Right, okay, and so go forward, that's a really no moment to us.
Yep.
Until we design again.
Correct.
And it'll be a different number, I presume.
Whatever they, however they make the math work, it.
Okay, precincts, they're interesting to us, but. They're really of no import to us in making this decision, is that true?
I believe so, I mean, again, that's a, that's a county function to provide precincts for for voting.
I'm just trying to, we, I guess what I'm asking is, we shouldn't spend too much time thinking about precincts.
I would really like you guys to focus on wards, so I don't think you need, precincts are important, but not.
Okay, I'm.
The wards are the focus.
Alright, and y- you did state that your ward one plan revised on page two, from your perspective. Gave us the great greatest growth latitude and and established meaningful boundaries.
Yeah, I think it's fairly compact, and that's something we hear about gerrymandering, you know, you get these snake.
Right.
Think, you you wanna keep it compact, I think it's fairly com, it's not the most compact, but it's fairly compact, it meets the requirements. But it, most importantly, it allows for that growth uh of three as opposed to just two districts, and that's. That's what's most important, is trying to keep every, trying to keep each, all four wards, let each of you represent your ten to twelve thousand people. And not somebody has to represent five thousand versus fifteen, and it it's just, it's overwhelming in terms of being able to provide your services to the. To the uh, the populations.
Well, and the fact that that incorporates recognizable geographic boundaries in. A couple of the others do too, I'm sure, but uh that's a desired feature, just to help people.
Yeah, major streets are, were a big component to the county folks that designed this, and I think you look at the map, other than the house district wards that kinda meander through neighborhoods. All the other boundaries do represent significant streets, it's a nice, so hard boundary to look at, so.
Okay, we'll go to Renee and then Steve.
I I just wanted to clarify, since Will and I are at home and we don't have the benefit of the handout in front of us, is the map that's currently displayed? The one that Grant and Dave were just talking about, that's the staff recommended, okay, just wanted to confirm, thank you.
Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, I've looked at these quite a bit over the last two days, uh and and from the standpoint. Of the the least attractive would be uh the ward plan number three.
Page uh. I don't know. And I didn't believe page five, maybe, yep.
Yeah, that'd be five, again, that that just really cuts off in that plan as it's showing on here. Ward four, uh again, from the concept that you're presenting, that we're talking about. Uh, your ward one plan does allow for that additional growth, and if we're gonna be having this. These wards for the next ten years, I think you need to allow, three of, three of those will accommodate growth. And especially wards uh two, three and four. Uh, and so if we look at plan one, to me, I agree with you one hundred percent, I think that's the best plan, the other two. Create wards that are islands with no additional growth on a long, on a longer term basis. Uh, the ward one plan does accommodate that, so to me, that makes at least the most sense in, in my mind, but.
Okay, anyone else, Renee, go ahead.
Sorry, I had just forgotten to lower my hand, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Anyone else? Okay.
Okay, so again, I'm I'm sorry to reiterate, Thursday, we will have a motion directing staff to which plan you like and precinct plan. Um, the ward one plan only has one precinct plan, so it's, you're not choosing between two with the first, with the page two. Um, the preferred plan, uh so I I do need that motion and that will allow me to start writing legal descriptions for the next week and a half, two weeks.
Kara, do you have anything to add? Not that you'd need to, but I'm just asking.
I have nothing else to add, I think they've explained that really well and you guys had really good questions, so.
Okay. If there's nothing further, I think that brings us to the end of the meeting. Good meeting, good discussions tonight, thank you everyone, we will see you all on Thursday.
Night, everybody.
Good night.